At an expense, democracy is an investment. We cannot and should not put the price on the tag of the right of the people to decide who represents them. Another concern mentioned is that District Five would be left without representation. With respect, I disagree. Every Commissioner on this dais represents all the residents of Miami-Dade County. You advocate for countywide issues every single day. I have full confidence that each and every one of you will step up during this brief transition to ensure that District Five's needs are protected. That temporary inconvenience is a very small price to pay for democracy. I advocate for countywide issue issues every day, and I've done it for many, many years as an elected official and a police officer. Now, because the Commissioner appointed-
Thank you, Mr. Senator.
...the process-
Thank you.
Can I finish?
No, you cannot.
Well, I ask you to please consider and give the people the right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Mayor. Some of you know me. My name is Hector Shewart. My address is blocked because I'm retired law enforcement. I had the pleasure of knowing Commissioner Garcia for many years. J.C. Bermudez is a friend of mine and a friend of my old office, the Miami-Dade Public Defender. And Keon, I remember you as a young attorney, a great attorney at the Miami-Dade Public Defender's Office when I was the chief investigator there.
Sir, please don't refer to any-
The reason that I'm here today, sir, is because I am a disabled Vietnam era veteran. There's over 500,000 men and women buried at Arlington Cemetery. There's more than 2 million veterans buried throughout different cemeteries in the United States, and the price of democracy has a price. I'm here to urge you to please allow for a special election for those of us that live in District Five. And if you decide to name someone, name someone that is not representing in this board. Name a veteran to the Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Greetings, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and Madam Mayor, and anyone else sitting on this dais. My name is Sharon Fraser Stevens. I live at 6516 Northwest 12th Avenue, Liberty Square Housing Development. I am supporting Item 2B2, 2B3, which is talking about the speed limit, and also 2B5. Madam Mayor, I know you guys do the best that you can to hear the voices of the people with these items. I have called City of Miami several times about the dump on 12th Avenue. Every time I walk my dogs in the morning on 65th, from 65th to 62nd Terrace, the speed, it's a one-way. We call it the wall. I live by the wall, the famous wall. Thank God for that. And when I get out my car, I have to jump back in my car because they come down that one way like a bat out of hell, excuse my expression. And I don't know if it's the job of the city or the county, because the city is on the east. Well, all is the city. But the related group is doing construction there, and all we got is a lot of dirty, dirty, I mean, people just dumping. And I called the 311. I called Code Enforcement and asked them, "Please clean that up," because it doesn't make the neighborhood look good. And just giving honor to my honorable Chair Roy Hardeman. As y'all can see, my heart is heavy, because me and Roy used to have many debatable nights. Jesus Christ. Oh, Lord. And I knew his heart. His heart was full of passion. He took the passion and became aggression, and I try not to let myself go at that. But I know it wasn't nobody but God woke me up, and somebody kicked me out of bed. And I say, "Roy, would you stop that?" He said, "You're another Dr. Christian." I said, "But Roy, we just got to tone it down. God bless you all, and my condolences go with you."
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. All right, I have James Torres, Billy Corbin, and Thomas Kennedy. James Torres, no. Billy Corbin, no. And Thomas Kennedy. All right. With that, reasonable opportunity is now closed. Madam Attorney, can we set the agenda at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I have Item 8A1. Senator Garcia adds this item to the poll list. That was 8A1.
You can release it.
Okay. With the setting of the agenda, 8A1 will be approved. 8M1 and its supplement. Commissioner Steinberg and Commissioner Milian Orbis add this item to the poll list. 8P1. Senator Garcia is adding this item to the poll list. 8P2. Commissioner Hardeman adds this item to the poll list. I have some additional requests for cosponsorship. 8J1. Senator Garcia. And 11A1. Senator Garcia. And I also have a request from Commissioner Regalado to pull 8J1. The items to be considered at today's meeting will be those listed in the printed final agenda with additions, deferrals, withdrawals, and scrivener's errors noted in the Chairman's memorandum and the items I just mentioned. The Commission will approve all these items by a single vote setting the agenda, except ordinances for first reading, public hearings, and the following poll list items. 8J1. 8M1 and its supplement. 8P1. 8P2. And 11A2 and its supplement. Motion to set the agendas in-
Mr. Chairman?
On the agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion also to add to the agenda. My motion is set the special election on January 27, 2026.
Not recognized, Vice Chairman. All right. Anything else?
Yes, and we need to add Item 15B1 to the poll list as well.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, so we're not recognizing the motion I made as part of setting-
Mr. Chairman, you're not recognized right now to speak.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just looking for clarity here. So I'm just making-
We will clarify in a second, but we're on an agenda.
No, I know. This is the part where we set the agenda. So what I'm asking is, is my motion to set a special election for-
This isn't a political-
No, no, listen, don't do that. Don't do that. No, don't do that. Don't do that, please.
Give you the courtesy of your respect.
Yeah, courtesy.
You've not been recognized.
No, I understand that. I have, this is the setting of the agenda.
I will entertain a motion to set the agenda at this time.
Move, set. A second.
It's been moved. It's been set.
A second.
Set the agenda. All in favor of setting the agenda as such signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. All right. At this time, I will recognize Commissioner Gilbert on 11A2 as a sponsoring Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to everyone who actually showed up to speak on the item. I appreciate all of your opinions. Thank you to the extraordinary candidates who actually submitted their names. Before I get into inserting a name, let me talk to you just for a bit about why I'm in favor of appointing at this time. I get the conversations about democracy. I think some people are making them kind of, you know, in a self-serving way, but I get the conversations. The thing is this, if you really favor democracy, you actually want this election to be held when people are actually going to show up and vote. I see what happens in special elections. 10, 12 percent, the people who have the most money stored up at the time, those are the people who can get their particular voters out. Those voters come out. It's a very low turnout, and someone's elected. I appreciate that. But what we're saying is, we're going to spend probably $1 million for 12 percent or 13 percent when we could actually have it when everyone else is on the ballot and people are actually coming to vote. It's extraordinary that we're saying that we want, and we're in favor of democracy, but we're asking for an outcome that, by its nature, has yielded fewer and less participation. If you really want people to participate, you want them to participate when elections happen, when they know they happen, when everyone's going out to vote, when you're getting stuff in the mail, when everyone's talking about their issues. I appreciate the calls for democracy. That's why I think this process is allowed. This process is allowed by our rules, by our charter, by our ordinances for this very reason, because the people who crafted them realize that sometimes it just wouldn't be pragmatic to have a special election and then five months later have another election. They realize that that wouldn't serve the people's best interests, not in the name of democracy and not in the name of fiscal responsibility. And so, no, I'm in favor of doing the appointment. Having said that, I'm familiar with all the people who, well, most of them, and I have nothing bad to say about any of them. I have a great and abiding respect for Joe, for David, for Commissioner Barrero, for Vicky Lopez. I know them. I'm going to ask that we appoint Vicky Lopez State Representative to this seat. That's going to be the name I insert. And I'll tell you why. She isn't here today. She's actually up in Tallahassee doing her job as a state representative. She currently represents this area. Part of the things that I considered was that the folks who are here, they represent part of the district. They have represented part of the district. She currently does. And so, the people who live in that district had an opportunity to hear her, talk to her really recently on issues that aren't completely dissimilar from the ones that we actually consider. They had that opportunity, and they elected her. So when you talk about what the people of District Five actually wanted, we know that they like her some because they elected her then. I don't know what will happen in August if we appoint her. I don't know whether she'll win or lose. I feel confident in her leadership. I feel confident in her service. I've had the opportunity to work with her, first as Vice Chairman, then Chairman, and then a Commissioner. She's always responsive. When we go to Tallahassee, there'd be some state representatives who were always against what the county, it didn't matter what we asked for. They were against it. She wasn't one of those people. She was one of those people who would actually stand up and fight for us, even if she knew she wasn't going to win. I appreciate that in a person. I appreciate that in a leader, someone who, if they believe something, whether the powers that be, believe it or not, they're going to stand up and they're going to fight. They're going to be 10 toes down. My recommendation is that we appoint Vicky Lopez, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion and a second on the table by Commissioner Cohen Higgins. I imagine there'll be some discussion seeing-
Wait, wait, what, discussion?
On discussion on the motion on the table.
Yes, I understand that there's a motion on the table to nominate Commissioner Vicky Lopez. And I just need to respond to some of, I mean, Representative Vicky Lopez, who is a dear friend of mine. And this is not necessarily about Commissioner Vicky Lopez. This just has to do with, I want to remind the Commissioners that when I first got elected, there was a referendum on the ballot. There was a question that was asked to the voters of Miami-Dade County. And that question said, "If there is a vacancy on the county commission because someone decides to run for mayor, there would be an election." If I'm not mistaken, that was a referendum that we voted on. Granted, there's a vacancy in the county commission now for the third time, and that person is not running for mayor of a county. However, it's still a vacancy that is created. The voters have spoken, and they said, "We want elections." And yet, now we're using the fact that we pick and choose when democracy applies. Democracy is something sacred. The people's voice should be sacred. Granted, Commissioner Gilbert, they speak through us. They elect us as a representative of democracy. I understand that that happens all the time. But when we use the issue of cost, when we say an election's going to cost $500,000, let me remind you that in the mid-budget year review, mid-budget, the mid-year budget adjustments, we voted for $10 million for FIFA. We voted for $1.8 million for CBOs. We added $549,000 and seven positions to manage the HR and administration and P-card administration. We did that. That all has a cost. We're able to find money for this, but then we say it's expensive to run an election. This is why I cannot support the motion to vote for Vicky, Representative Vicky Lopez, who I think is a great person, but I think we can do better, and our residents of Miami-Dade County and the district deserve further voices to be heard.
Thank you, Senator. We don't, we don't, we do this thing that Commissioner Gilbert started with fingers. All right. With that-
Wait.
Commissioner Steinberg, and then Commissioner Bermudez.
Thank you. I just want to express why I will not be supporting an appointment. I think it's nothing to do with the candidate. Candidate is fantastic. All the candidates are fantastic, but similar to my position when we filled the District Six vacancy, I voted again, and I voted for the election route then, and I will do so again today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bermudez, you're recognized.
Yeah, I will just express why I'm voting against filling the vacancy at this time and the day of this motion. You know, Vicky Lopez is an extraordinary person. And by the way, she's a Notre Dame graduate, so I'm sure she's looking. But so are the four other individuals that have put their names in. And when you have a person who is in a position here at the county in an election that'll take place months from now, it will give them a great advantage from the fundraising perspective and from other perspectives. And we all know that. We don't want to talk about it, but it's the truth. So she's a great lady. She's a good person. But the important thing is that she, like everybody else, be able to participate in a fair and square election. Let me just add two other things, my experience. When I was named to the community council when former county commissioner Marion Alonso was arrested, I was named by Pepe Cancio, who at the time had agreed with the governor of the state of Florida, because that was a governor's appointment, that, you know, he was not going to run in the subsequent election. That's how Pepe Diaz got here, actually. And I was named to the community council because Commissioner Alonso had pretty much worked behind the scenes to block my appointment despite the fact that I had the community's support. And the gentleman who got it didn't. At that time, Mr. Morales, I don't know if he's out there in the audience, but he was the county commissioner, and Chris O'Connor, and Miguel Diaz Portillo, I know is out here in the audience, and a number of others, Alex Manellas, Maurice Ferreira. I said, "How is it that this happens, that they don't have to run at the next election, that you have to run the next general election, but, you know, these community councils have so many people that aren't elected?" So anyways, I was appointed. Then came the time where Pepe Diaz got in, and my choice was to either stay on there as the appointee for that Commissioner or run for community council. And I had argued that there should be an election, so I had to keep my word. And I resigned to run for community council. And that's how I got here, in a way. But the bottom line is, in the end, and I agree with Senator Garcia, that for us to talk about a special election costing extra, why, when we're spending dollars on other things, really, and we all know that there will be, if anybody is appointed, anybody, by the way, anybody is appointed, there will be a special benefit to that person as a sitting Commissioner if they're running in August. So the last thing is, Commissioner Higgins will have the utmost respect for, we're not even, we don't even agree on anything nationally, but we were able to work together. We were able to, basically, she always kept an open mind to do the right thing for Miami-Dade County and didn't make it about a partisan issue. And let me say, that's important, because some have asked me, "Well, then, you're not a good partisan person." Well, I'm going to tell you what. It's time in America that all of us put America over parties, number one. And number two, I think I am a good party person, because the party I belong to believes in elections, local, close, smaller government, also financially responsible and fiscally responsible government. So that's the party I belong to. So to me, for all those reasons, I will be, I will not be supporting this motion. I have great, but I, you know, I have great admiration for Vicky, and if it turns out that it's a positive vote, much like it is with all the other colleagues that are here, I'll be more than happy to work with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hardeman, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. You know, I'm not going to belabor these matters. I appreciate my dear Commissioner to my right and his reflection about how he became a Commissioner. We all have taken different paths. And I made this comment to good friends on this dais and to others, that no one has ever given me anything to become a City of Miami Commissioner and a Miami-Dade County Commissioner. I worked my butt off for. And if not for those who worked their butt off to become later elected, but just even considered and to have my family be considered in a good light, people like Representative Roy Hardeman, you know, I would not become a Commissioner. It's hard. It's difficult. And each of us has a spirit of luck from time to time that takes us from one place to another, and I think we all need that in life, because you're not going to be able to do this all on your own. And so, I've had the, I've been on the wrong, I've been on the losing side of these sort of matters when I was leaving the City of Miami, and I wanted someone to follow in my footsteps, who I thought, because they had worked with me for the seven years prior to me leaving, they would ensure that my legacy and the projects that we were moving forward continued throughout the City of Miami. The Miami City Commission did differently. They did differently. I sat in the front row. There was a Commissioner there who supported the idea that I thought, and I didn't even, I didn't even advocate to them for, but they just knew because they understood the nature of how I ran my office and what was happening. And there was a Commissioner, and you can rewind the tape, that was up there that said, "Well, let's hear from what Commissioner Hardeman has to say during public comment." And other Commissioners that I sat on that dais said, "No, no, no, we don't want to hear So I know what that feels like. I know what it meant to shake that man's hand, say, "Congratulations." He looked me in the face, "I want to work with you." And I said, "Congratulations." And know that everything from that point forward was in jeopardy. It remained in jeopardy. Things changed very quickly. But what we focused on during that time was ensuring that the person that I thought would best represent my district in the way that I thought was honorable become elected, and she did. And then she was elected, and that person, so she was against the person that was sitting on the dais, who actually promised not to run. As a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, he pulled his mask down and said, "Read my lips. I will not run. Is that good enough for you?" And he ran. And he lost. And so, when I moved on, when we, the Commissioner who I supported won, she just won reelection, I think something like 80% of the vote, run till that. And then I came to this body. And on this body, I've had the fortune to have to vote on two matters, if I remember correctly, in which we had to have people join this body. The first matter that we did this with was with one of our dear Commissioners that is to the right of the chair, men. And I must say to you all that she is one of the brightest, most articulate, most thoughtful people that serve in this body. She is a challenge. And that's good. I want my daughter to be challenges like she is. I'm proud of my vote. I'm meeting another young lady that I had the opportunity to vote on that sits on the dais to my left, two, three seats to the right of her. I didn't know her from any person more than any other person that I would see from time to time. When I met her, she was kind. Kind words, kind eyes. I didn't follow her politics, and she's adding beautifully to this dais. And so, she's another example of someone that I would be very happy for my daughters When I look at, you know, what we have, the decision we have to make today, you know, when I look at that list, I know everybody on that list. And, you know, and I've had conversations, at least with most of them. And I would, you know, if they got together and had a conversation, they would probably, they can express how consistent I am and how I feel about things. I'm not the type of person that, who is bona fide one way or the other when it comes to an election versus an appointment. It's just, I'm just not. We understand the rules and how they affect us and how we move forward over the next few months or the next, in the next year, with how we feel the vacancies that are on, you know, this dais. And so, you know, I see an empty seat here today. And if you don't believe that an empty seat has a major, leaves a major hole in any organization, then look at the boards that have vacancies and can't get quorum and suffer when they, you know, you can't get seven or whatever votes, it means to move forward. You know, it's much more difficult to do that. I'm not looking at an empty seat while I serve in this board. It's not, I don't think it's fruitful for us. I think that we make a decision to appoint someone now, knowing that there's an election coming just thereafter. And in my perspective, from where I've served from, anytime you've been appointed to a position, you are not the favor. Meaning, the body, the people of Miami-Dade County, like in the City of Miami, have an opportunity to say to you, "We don't want you." No matter how much money you can raise, no matter how tall, no matter how beautiful, no matter how handsome, we don't want you. And I've seen that happen with people who were appointed from time to time, from Jeff Allen to the former Miami City Commissioner, to very good friends of mine that are reverends that served in this season. I mean, I've seen a number of people get appointed and lose. And so, I believe in my perspective. Like, for instance, when my dear friend, Chairwoman Kristen King, was not appointed, I thought it was the best thing ever, because now that you have something to complain about, go complain to whoever's in the seat. Now you don't have the relationships that you had before. Figure out how it is that you're going to get the things that you need for Liberty City, for Overtown, for Windwood, for the places that need it the most. And so, you know, in that sense, I believe that we have to continue the work. And so, for us to continue to work, the one thing that I will say about the motion that's on the floor is that of all the people that I understand that are being considered, this person has to lay down their current benefits, has to let go of what God has given them in their hand in order to capture what is the opportunity here today. And if they, if they release their fist to allow an opportunity to come into their hand, that doesn't mean that they catch it. You don't always catch lightning. And so, lightning may strike here today. I don't know who's going to catch it, but I know one thing, that if we consider the motion that's on the floor, that person, they may have an opportunity to serve, but it may be short, because the talent that we have in Miami-Dade County and the people that are here and the names that have put their names forward in this are worthy people of service. They're proven time and time again. And so, to close, you know, I'll say to you that when I got up this morning, I didn't know exactly how things were going to go. I'm sitting on this dais, and, you know, we've heard some comments, and I had to step away from the dais for a moment. I'm not ready for everything, but I'm ready to close this chapter and continue to move on with Miami-Dade County so we can do the business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Regalado, and then followed by Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just want to put something on the record, because I think Commissioner Garcia brought up a good point as to how we find ourselves in this position. I respect our colleague, Eileen Higgins, but she could have resigned sooner. And right now, we would either have someone elected or be going into a runoff to elect someone. When I left my seat at the school board, I resigned to run in time. And the person who ran, when I ran for mayor, my replacement was running on the same ballot. When my father decided to run for City of Miami Mayor, he resigned at the right time. An election doesn't have to cost money. This board is being put in a very difficult decision, and I get it, it's hard to let go. As someone who resigned to run, it's a difficult thing to do. You put yourself at peril. People no longer answer your calls like they used to when you were elected. I am for an election, but I understand the difficult position that- But I understand the difficult position that everyone's been put in. And I think that as we move forward, we should seriously consider that. Because we all have the obligation to resign in a timely manner, so that things can be done in the best possible way. And I think we were having an election in Miami Beach, we were having an election in the city of Miami, it would have made perfect sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was moved by Commissioner Hardeman's speech because. I'm not going to lie to you, in, in the past few weeks, I've been thinking about that election. Because I remember that in the city of Miami as a spectator, right? And I remember the, the mask, I, I, I remember that, like you just brought that to my head. I, I do have a question for the county attorneys, because I did notice that there was a memo that was circled yesterday. I, I, I hope that all my colleagues got the memo. It is the conversation I originally had with the county attorney's office, but I, I'd like just clarification, because I think everybody on this dais is for elections. And I think everybody on this dais wants to make sure that the people's voices are heard, especially if we're going to have the most amount of people vote. And so. Commissioner Hardeman mentioned there's a short amount of time that could be lived if someone were to be appointed. And so, if I can have the county attorney's office just clarify, because I, I, I read the charter. And in the charter, it states that if somebody is appointed, that they have to run in the next duly election. And I just want that clarification, because it just seems like maybe it wasn't, maybe, I, I don't know, maybe there was a misunderstanding, but I want to make sure that that is accurate. If somebody gets appointed, they have to, they have to run in an election in August, in the next countywide election. Is that, is that the way that the charter is interpreted?
Madam Attorney, you're recognized.
Thank you through the chair, a person appointed shall serve only until the next countywide election. If that person wishes to succeed, you know, and have, and in further office, they must run in the next countywide election. And whoever is elected in the next countywide election would serve out the remainder of the term. The next countywide election is currently scheduled August of twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, with that, Vice Chairman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the members, and, you know. The name that has been brought forth for us to consider for an appointment is someone who I've had the honor and the privilege of knowing for tw- for over twenty years. When I was a prosecutor in Miami-Dade County here, I served as the, one of the community prosecutors. And I have the honor and privilege of serving on a board called Transition Inc. And Transition Inc., for those of you who know, was a board that allowed for us to help those who were returning from incarceration. A name that we deemed returning citizens. And during that time, I had the honor and privilege of serving as the president of Transition Inc. And also working very closely on the board and, and helping with all issues related to our return to citizens. During that time, I had a great opportunity to meet with a young lady. Who without a question was one of the brightest, if not one of the most. Hard-charging leaders for change as related to our criminal justice system. We fast forward, and the same young lady, and Vicky is who I'm talking about. We stood on the front lines on many other issues, not just for criminal justice reform, not just for community issues that are, that were affecting just my district or, or the state's attorney's office or the county overall. But we were looking for issues that would affect lives regardless of their color, their station in life, their sexual orientation. Vicky is a person who I call a friend, and Vicky will forever be my friend, because that's, that is the type of person I am, and that is the type of person Vicky is also. What brings us here today is a question of not about who gets to fill a seat, right? The real question is about who gets to choose. It's not about filling the seat, it's about who gets to choose. Will it be us, elected officials who do not represent District Five? Or will it be the people? Will they be the ones to get to choose? That's what the real issue is this morning or this afternoon, who gets to choose, not about who fills the seat. So, knowing that. I filed legislation here to put that question in front of us. In addition to having a question about an appointment. I wanted us to have the opportunity to review both an appointment and the election. Unfortunately, our rules require though, says that if someone has a hold on that information or that legislation, you cannot move forward with it. Hence, why I actually attempted to make a motion to bring that particular item in front of us. So we can have a discussion on that also, in addition to the appointment. Commissioner Hardeman said it best, right? This is, this is one of those moments where it's tough. And looking at an empty seat should cause consternation in all of us. Because we know there are just so many issues that must be decided, that are heavy issues that's going to affect us one way or the other. And we also have to look at the reality that, yes, in fact, we've supported appointments in the past. And appointments that I would not go for any reason and undo. I support all the members on this board who've received an appointment to this board, and they turned out to be God-sent. So that is not the issue. But the issue before us today now rests with the fact that it's about the choice. We don't have a choice between appointment and election, because my item never made it, which is an election item. And now, we're asking each other. To decide who gets to choose to fill the seat for District Five. So. Looking at it through those lenses. Again, it goes back to the choice. And. Vicky, again, without a question, along with the rest of the, the body who applied for that position. Would make great commissioners. But my position has always. Been to look at this from the standpoint of where we are today. Look at it from a standpoint for where we are today. And where we are today is. Do we have the time? To allow for the folk of District Five to choose their representative? My answer is yes. January twenty seventh is the same day that Florida City will be holding its election. January twenty seventh, twenty twenty six. And between now and January twenty seventh. I believe there are probably about three to four meetings. That we're going to have. Between now and January twenty seventh. In addition to that. When you look at it through those lenses. We look at it through. A reality that. Commissioner Regalado brought up. Was this avoidable? Was it? We predicted it was, and that's why I moved to file that legislation, because we understood that decisions do have consequences. And if the decision would have been made earlier to move. In a certain way, we wouldn't be having this discussion. The discussion we would be having is setting a date for the election. And after setting the date for the election, setting a date for a runoff if a runoff was needed. But again, as I close, we're here now, so we're going to deal with what we have now. And what we have now is not the opportunity for anyone to raise the question. Or vote for an election. That's not before us. We just got the appointment. And so, my position is. I would like to see an election. I love Vicky. I love every one of us who applied for this position, but I would like to see an election. And similar to what my colleagues did earlier. You know, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, I would like to see an election, but I would also have liked to have seen. The legislation that could have been brought before my colleagues to have that discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. All right, I will, I will just add, and I won't. I won't say much, but I got to say, I, I got to agree with a lot of my colleagues, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Gilbert. But I think Commissioner Hardeman, you really hit the nail on the head. And I, and I will just repeat that. Something that Gonzalez really said most recently is, we are all for an election, we are all for a democracy, and that is what I am voting today. I am going to be supporting the appointment on the motion of Vicky Lopez today. And that is supporting democracy, that is supporting an election, because voting against that. Means that a special election will have plus or minus thirteen percent voter turnout, is what this very district had back in twenty eighteen in a special. Versus a, a gubernatorial year, a countywide election that will go up to forty-five, fifty percent of voter turnout. So I am giving, with my vote, the constituents of District Five a voice in their representative for the next three years, just come in eight months. And to Commissioner Hardeman's point, the person we appoint doesn't necessarily win their reelection if they decide to run for reelection. So the voters of this district, by a lot more majority, will have a voice in who will be their commissioner for another three years after that to finish that term of Commissioner Higgins. So, that argument, that notion that an appointment is not giving the voice. I just don't subscribe to that. With that, I will be supporting your motion today, Commissioner Gilbert, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bastian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bermudez. Commissioner Cohen Higgins.
I vote yes.
Senator Garcia. Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Four.
Commissioner Hardeman. Commissioner Milian Orbis. Commissioner Regalado.
No.
Commissioner Steinberg. Vice Chairman McGee.
Respect.
Respectfully, no.
Chairman Rodriguez.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to five.
Congratulations, Representative Vicky Lopez, which is up in Tallahassee, I'm sure she's watching, I know she had committees all day long. Congratulations, and we, uh, uh, hope you could get down here soon and join us here on the dais. All right, thank you all, and thank you to all the candidates that submitted as well, and everybody for their cooperation and discussion. All right.
Mr. Chair, that was for the record, eleven A two as amended.
Yes, ma'am. All right, first reading items in order now, Madam Attorney.
Yes, you have one item, it is item four A, ordinance relating to zoning, creating section thirty-three dash twenty-six point one and amending section thirty-three dash one of the code. Clarifying standards and procedures applicable to certified recovery residences. Providing process for certified recovery residences to obtain reasonable accommodations from land use regulations. Amending section thirty-three dash three oh four point two. Providing a completeness review period for processing of applications for reasonable accommodations, providing severability, inclusion in the code, and an effective date. That's item four A.
All right, with that, do I have a motion?
The motion, uh, moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bermudez. Commissioner Cohen Higgins. Senator Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Four.
Commissioner Hardeman. Commissioner Milian Orbis. Commissioner Regalado. Commissioner Steinberg. Commissioner Bastian.
Yes.
Vice Chairman McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Rodriguez.
I vote yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, Madam Attorney, can we move into public hearing items at this time?
Before, before, Mr., I think.
Senator Garcia, yes.
Mister. Yes, Senator Garcia has a procedural motion with respect to item four A, do you want me to read that first before we move?
Yes, let's go ahead and read that motion, yes.
I, I apologize, just go ahead, do you want to do that? It's a folks, all we're doing is complying with state law, and what this motion does is going to allow, waive some of the rules, so we can comply with state law before the deadline, which is sometime in December. So that's what it is, but read the motion.
All right, it's been moved by Senator Garcia, uh, seconded by Gonzalez, uh, voice vote is, it's a motion, right?
Yes, and this would just set the public hearing and the second reading at your December second meeting, and fifteen B one was pulled as well, so with the approval of this motion, we'd also dispense with item fifteen B one.
All in favor signify by say nay. All opposed, nay. Sure, that motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome, uh, public hearing items, Madam Attorney.
Yes, I'll try to read them quickly. Five A is a resolution approving the plat of El Cayon. Five B is a resolution approving the plat of terraces at Biscayne Gardens. Five C is a resolution approving the waiver of plat of Miami-Dade County. Five D is a resolution taking action on class one permit application and request for variance by Yachting Promotions Inc. For a temporary three hundred and fifty slip docking facility for an annual boat show within the Indian Creek Waterway from forty-four zero one to forty-seven seventy-five Collins Avenue, Miami Beach. Five V is a resolution declaring a surplus certain county-owned properties known as Arthur May's Villas, Noranha, Noranja Modelo Two, and Pine Island Public Housing Developments. Revising the inventory list of real properties for affordable housing to include the properties. Directing the mayor on an expedited basis to perform all due diligence necessary to determine whether any obstacles or impediments exist to dispose of the properties under the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Section eighteen and/or Rental Assistance Demonstration Program for the purpose of redeveloping said properties with affordable homeownership housing. Negotiate final terms of a lease and development agreement with SG South Miami Day Ventures LLC. Seek HUD's consent to dispose and or amend any existing disposition of properties without a competitive process. And initiate the HUD-required community engagement process requiring report and directing the mayor to submit the final agreement to the board for approval. Five F is a resolution declaring a surplus certain county-owned properties known as Klein Nun, Little River Plaza, and Little River Terrace Public Housing Developments, and one vacant county-owned property. Revising the inventory list of real properties for affordable housing to include properties. Directing the mayor on an expedited basis to perform all due diligence necessary to determine whether any obstacles or impediments exist to dispose of the properties under the US HUD Section eighteen and/or Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. Negotiate final terms of a ninety-nine-year ground lease or lease with development agreement with PCSH Little River Redevelopment LLC of Florida Limited Liability Company and an affiliate of Pinnacle Communities Two and Smith and Henze Affordable Group. Seek HUD's consent to dispose of the properties without a competitive process. Seek Florida Department of Environmental Protections consent to allocate fifty million dollars in resilient Florida grant program funds to the developer to make improvements in the Little River Adaptation Action Area. And initiate the HUD-required community engagement process requiring a report and directing the mayor to submit the final agreement to the board for approval. Those are your public hearing items.
All right, thank you very much, um, any bifurcations? Yes, yes, I hear yes, yes, behind the dais, yes, yes. Microphone.
Five E.
Five E.
To vote, no.
Okay, so Steinberg, all right, any additional bifurcations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move the remainder of the public hearing items? It's been moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Gilbert, and all those in favor signify by say nay. All opposed, nay. Do I hear a motion on five E? Commissioner McGee, Vice Chairman? Uh, it's been moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Cohen Higgins, all in favor signify by say nay. All opposed, nay.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, did, did you have any cards for public hearing?
I did not.
Thank you.
That's why I skipped right through it, so, there was no cards, let me say that on the record, though, there was no cards, that's why I did not open it. So, show the public hearing items, I did say all in favor, right? Yeah, so I passed, okay. Uh, Madam Attorney, let's move into the pool list, right?
Yes, um, you want to go in order?
Yes, let's, um, do, let me see, hold on, before we go in order. what we could dispose of, I think, eight J one? Eight J one, Commissioner, uh, from District Seven. Commissioner from District Seven. Commissioner from District Seven, you're the pooling commissioner for eight J one.
Yes, um, I just wanted Heidi to come up and, I'm for the item, I'm happy to support it. Um, having spent way too much time looking at the master plan. My question is, is this gonna free up potentially some space for our fuel farm?
So we'll be getting about an acre of land back in this? They had the, NCL had the first right to negotiate for an expanded parking facility, that item came to the board as you recall. They are giving back that one acre, it's about point nine seven.
Right.
So we're looking at the highest and best use for that one acre, yeah.
But we also have a lot of surface parking, is this gonna free up any of that surface parking?
So right now, that one acre serves as surface parking, temporary parking for Ubers, T and E's, taxis, lifts.
But I'm saying anywhere else in the port, like, could we make this parking lot bigger so that you can free up more space, is the question?
So it's, it's in a unique location, you're not gonna get more than the acre, cause the plot right next to it will be this multi-story garage that's being built. But that one acre is port property, will remain port property for port use, for the port to decide what to do with it. Correct?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, are there any other, any other discussions?
Move the item.
Seeing moving by Commissioner Steinberg, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, all in favor? All against? Short item passes. Uh, eight M one. Uh, that was pulled by District Six and District Four.
And the supplement, eight M one.
And the supplement.
Um, okay, may I?
Please. Please, you're recognized.
Thank you, we had a lot of municipalities uh, come to us with concerns, and so, based on the feedback from the municipalities on this specific item, I believe that the department has met with several of them and has proffered amendments which I would like to, um, which were passed out. I don't know legally if you're gonna have to read all of this or not, but, um, they're quite extensive, and I would ask that the county attorney read whatever they need to for, um, this amended amendment, thank you.
You're recognized, thank you.
Commissioner Steinberg moves to amend Item eight M one to include amendments to the standard form of third amended and restated in a local agreement between Miami Dade County and contract cities for use of the county's solid waste management system. Exhibit two to the supplement to Agenda Item number eight M one contains the proposed final version of the interlocal reflective of all changes and inclusive of the amendments contained in the floor amendment which was provided to this body and to the clerk.
Thank you.
So I'll move it as amended for purposes of, um,
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a second?
Second.
Short item been moved and seconded by Commissioner Bermudez, all in favor?
Oh, I had, I was, I still wanted to speak, I pulled it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Steinberg for clarifying some of the things, um, four of my six municipalities are also, um, contract cities, uh, part of solid waste contracts. And, you know, two of them expressed some concerns, so I just, you know, wanted to say to the department that, you know, thank you for clarifying the disposal fee and the schedule um, that would have, that might have negatively impacted the cities. Um, I appreciate that, and I don't know if anyone's here from the department that can speak to that? Thank you.
Thank you Director, just wanted to clarify that we did change the language on the disposal uh, fees impacting the scheduling of, uh, the increase of the fees.
Yes, uh, through the chair.
You're recognized, thank you.
Yes, so the, the fee that we have here is going to be, um, applied applicably to all fifteen municipalities within the ILA.
Thank you, and I appreciate, you know, we worked on this as well, so I, I appreciate, uh, you being available to work with me and make sure that all of our cities are taken care of. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Happy to second it as well.
Okay, Commissioner Regalado, please.
Um, thank you, I know you went out to visit South Miami, that was my one city, uh, that was complaining about it. Um, and I know that the mayor was looking at the amendments. Um, did you have an opportunity to talk to them about their project and if it would be impacted by this?
With, with regards to who, South Miami?
South Miami.
I'm not quite sure which project you're referring to, you wanna?
Well, they have a site where they wanna do, um, some trash collection themselves. So, obviously that was one of the, one of the concerns, is if this would prohibit them in any way from moving forward with that project.
We did add some language in the contract, um, in, in the ILA that talks about, um, allowing for some sorting materials, and so it, it should, um, take care of some of the language that they were looking for, cause if they wanted to do um, composting or anything of that nature, they wanted to be able to see if they put those scraps aside, if that would be, would count against them. And so I do believe we've been able to address some of the concerns.
Right, I think that's more of a Coral Gables issue than a South Miami issue. Coral Gables is the city that wants to do, um, yard waste, and they wanna do some, some composting. In the case of South Miami, Roy, as you know, um, they have a lot that they would like to, that they would like to use, and I know that they're under contract. Did you have an opportunity to talk to them about this?
So Commissioner, I, actually I walked their site with them, and when we walked the site, we walked the site to took it, take a look at if they will be able to build a transfer station, but the facility is not large enough to build a transfer station. So that's, that's the conversation we talked about, building a transfer station on, on their particular site.
Okay, alright, um, I know that we have a transfer station with the city of Coral Gables, and we have a lease that we're trying to extend there. Um, so I just, just flag, right? Concerned about Coral Gables in South Miami on this one. Because, you know, they, they have the right to manifest destiny, right? They have properties, uh, and I just wanna ensure that they're not being punished by this. Uh, and that there is an opportunity to circle back. I appreciate the amendments, uh, that Commissioner Steinberg is proposing. Those have to do mainly with cities and what they're gonna be charged. Uh, but in the case of these two particular cities, they own properties and they want to do some waste management themselves. So, um, I don't, I'll work with the attorneys and see if we can figure out, you know, a path forward for the ones that wanna take that on. Um, so that they're not prescriptively bound, um, to this ILA, so thank you.
Thank you, are there any other, Commissioner Bermudez, you're recognized.
Yeah, Madam Director, just, cause I'm gonna address this mostly, if, if I may. I agree, by the way, I love the fact that Commissioner Regalado used the word manifest destiny, but I totally agree with her on the, uh, I haven't heard that in a long time, but I was watching The American Revolution on PBS, so I gotta say, but, uh, the, uh, I agree with her. And I do believe that if those two cities have the desire to do that, you know, I don't, you know, I just don't want them in our agreements, cause it has nothing to do with price. I agree with the Commissioner Steinberg's suggestion on price, but I don't wanna limit their ability to offer us the opportunity. Cause today maybe the transfer station is not big enough, but tomorrow it may be. And I don't wanna exclude the opportunity, I haven't had a chance to speak to Mayor Fernandez on this issue. But, uh, I would assume, knowing him and having worked with him, that he probably wants to have as many options as possible, and Mayor Lago supposedly would probably do it also in Coral Gables, so. I, so you're, you're, this does not necessarily exclude what Commissioner Regalado was talking about, that we could still uh, talk to the county attorneys and you and give them that flexibility, correct?
What I will say is, we left the door open as it relates to opportunities for future things, particularly in the, in the conversations with South Miami. Um, if there's opportunities in the future for us to build something there, or build something or do something else later in the future. Um, right now, the ILA that we have before you allows us to continue, um, to allow them contract rate for the disposal. Uh, we needed to move forward with that, but that doesn't preclude us from continuing to have further conversations about other opportunities.
I, I don't have a problem with the,
Okay.
the, the, the numbers, you did a great job, and herding, you know, all these cats is very difficult. But I had the concerns that Commissioner Regalado had, but I think you're telling me that there is an opportunity on other issues that have nothing to do with this.
We talked, right, we, we as Miami Dade County Solid Waste, we have been looking towards waste diversion, and one of the things you know, um, just this weekend, we actually
um, did our MDIA challenge and had, um, three winning cities that actually were, um, granted an award based on waste diversion. One for biochar, um, another one for composting, and then another one with a, a recycling app that allows you to, um, scan your product and then identify if it's recyclable or not. So we're, we're trying to do all the things we can right now to move towards waste diversion.
That's good, you really got the Commissioner Regalado's heart with the last two there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Orbis was in line, followed by Commissioner Steinberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, just wanted to share that both of these properties are in District Six, the West Transfer Station and the station, um, the property in South Miami. And we have been closely monitoring this situation, I've met with the Director on this. I look forward to continuing to work with you, to make sure that both of these cities are um, content, that the residents are at the heart of the decisions that we're making, but, you know, we share Coral Gables, and the West Transfer Station is in District Six, so we wanna make sure that the proper decision is made, so, you know, thank you to the Director. Solid waste, um, I know that we're gonna continue these discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberg, followed by Commissioner Regalado.
No, all I was gonna say, just to also, these ILAs can always be amended in the future. So, if we see other things that come up, I mean, this is not my item, I just brought forward the amendments because I was concerned about some of the implications for the municipalities. And once they work that out, if there's still more work to be done, I'm sure there is opportunities, correct, Roy, um, if I may through the chair? Um, ILAs can always be amended as we see things down the, the road, correct?
Is that a yes?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner Regalado, please.
Thank you, um, I was in communication, uh, with Mayor Fernandez from South Miami, and he says that he does not feel comfortable, um, with, with the amendments, uh, in terms of safeguarding his opportunity, you know, to move forward with what South Miami wants to do. Um, so if I could just proffer an amendment, uh, it's a very simple concept. Of course, we can always change an ILA, uh, you know, that, that's not the issue, the, the issue is the timing of it. Um, as, as, as Commissioner Bermudez knows, and those of us that, you know, follow municipalities, it, it could take you a year to amend an ILA. I mean, by the time you go back and forth, back and forth, you know, with the city attorneys and the county attorneys, by the time it goes through committee and it gets here, you could have totally missed your window to do whatever business you wanted to do. Um, so, uh, what I would, um, what I would request is that this board, as part of this item, allow the cities, um, that are covered by this ILA, that should they want to amend it, um, in order to do some other form of waste management, that that amendment would be expedited, uh, by this administration, and that it would not go to committee but straight to the BCC. And that way, if they have an issue, right? Uh, at least we can get to them in time. Because my concern is, you can get wound up in the administration and then completely lose your window of time.
Do you, do you need a second on that, cause I,
A second.
I, okay.
Thank you.
It's your amendment, I second it, but I, I would agree with that, fine.
We'll amend the amendment.
Well, amend the amendment to include.
Mr. Attorney, did you get all of that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can the Director address that?
Please.
Through the chair, there's language that we amended in the current agreement that allows the cities an out where that was not there before. So there is language in there, if the city desires to get out of this agreement, they do have an opportunity to do that where they did not before in the previous ILA.
I'm aware, but they may not, they may not be in a position to take all of their trash. So if they need to amend it, I'm just making it easier for them to be able to come back and amend this. Right, so, I'm, I'm just saving them time, because this process is a very long process. Um, so I'm just saying if they need to amend it for whatever reason, based on their own decision to dispose of their waste in a different way, which may include us in part, but not wholly, right? That, then it would come straight to the BCC.
Alright. Commissioner Gilbert?
Thank you Vice Chairman, I'm, I'm generally supportive of it, though, as a rule, I don't necessarily like to put things out there that actually skip committee review for obvious reasons. And so I just want us to be mindful that it's gonna be coming directed to us without committee review, without any of the analysis, without any discussion, that typically happens at committees, but I don't necessarily have a problem with it.
Alright.
Yeah, and, and to respond to that, listen, I agree with you, the thing is with an interlocal, any, any, that's gonna go back and forth, it has to be approved by them, it has, you know, so, the, I think an interlocal is a little different. Um, I will tell you that they've all spent a lot of time working on this, so the fact that they still have some issues with it, I just wanna move it forward. Uh, I don't, we hit the pause button a few times on this thing, so I just wanna give them an opportunity. They have an existing contract for the use of this facility. So that's really my concern with the time.
Thank you, so, Mr. Attorney, just wanted to make sure, you have all the amendments that were proffered and accepted?
We have the amendments, the, the, the waiver committee review would be, would be a suspension of the rules, so that would require two-thirds vote to do that. The other alternative would be to bring a rules, a change to the rules, that would be by ordinance. But those would be sort of the two paths that you, you could go down to get to where you want.
Commissioner Regalado, I don't believe we have an issue with the votes now, so you just,
No, I don't think we do.
So, 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 the item has been moved as amended. Um, it was moved by Commissioner Steinberg and seconded by Commissioner Bermudez. All in favor? All against? Short item passes.
And just to clarify, that includes the suspension of the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
That works? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. AP one is next, District Thirteen.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this, this is, this issue has to do with, um, the Smart Readers, which is a great program, I think it's great that we're doing this. Uh, Commissioner Regalado, or, or the administration, I'm not sure this came through you or through the administration's office. When we start implementing these smart readers, um, me, that means it will have less meter readers going out there. What happens to those meter readers, what is the timeframe, are we gonna find them other jobs? Are they gonna be absorbed into the county? What, what happens at that point, and what's the timeframe that we're looking?
You recognize?
Roy, I mean, I'm happy to answer that, but Roy can do it too. Um, this, this is gonna take several years. Obviously, we have a lot of issues with broken readers and misread readers, this is gonna eliminate that. And that workforce, uh, can then be rolled into other positions at water and sewer. They have other skills, uh, and what our plan is to, to give them other opportunities within the department.
Is there, is there a plan in place, uh, for the, for the chair?
Yeah, please.
What does that plan look like, because, you know, the reality is that we're, and I know we're looking to shrink the size of government, but I'm kinda shocked that what we're doing with these meter readers from the administration's perspective.
Senator Garcia, when, when we implement this program, what we're gonna find is that, as time goes, while we're spending less time reading meters, we will be spending more time interacting with the customers, because we're gonna give them a public-facing, um, website database telling them about their water usage, and then these people will transition into positions that will be supporting those customers, and then ultimately, if there is a reduction in workforce, it would all be through attrition, no one would ever lose a job. What we would expect is, is for them to upskill and become more, uh, capable in customer service.
That, that is, Mr. Chairman, if I can, that is great, but is there a plan in place? Cause now you're saying they're gonna upskill. So do we have a plan in place to train these employees, to retrain them to get into the workforce?
Yes.
What's the plan that we have in place? Cause, the reason I'm asking these questions is we come up with a lot of different scenarios, and we just never have a plan, and then we're always working against the clock, and just wanna make sure that, what, what this plan looks like, and what is in writing, where is this plan?
Sir, we're, we're happy to provide you a copy of the training plan, the Water and Sewer Department has a very comprehensive training plan to take, uh, not only these folks, but other positions, and train them into the positions of need.
Okay, so we have one plan for these meter readers that are gonna lose their jobs?
Nobody's gonna lose their job, there is no meter reader gonna lose a job.
We have a plan in place for the meter readers are gonna, uh, be reallocated. We have a plan in place for them.
But, for the next five years, while this program's being implemented, they will continue to read meters, and then during that five-year period of time, they will also learn the new system. And that's part of implementing the new system, is training them how to use it.
So then, within the next five years, which, what I'm hearing you say is that there is no actual plan right now?
Yes, there is an actual plan.
Okay, so can you get that actual plan to, cause you just said right now, within the next five years, through that tr- transition plan, we will have a plan in place that will be, that,
Let me clarify.
Yes.
Let me clarify, the, the implementation of this program is five years.
Okay.
During that five-year plan, as this system is installed, the installers of the system, the vendor, is training our employees how to use it and how to manage that system. So, that is part of the plan as it exists today.
What, what, actually, maybe another question, Mr. Chairman, after that. He says that there's gonna be a website in place, that there'll be less people, there'll be people more, interacting more with this website than with the actual personnel. How is, how does that look?
What it looks like is we have a public-facing site where all customers can, will have information coming to them, and they can access it themselves, uh, to see their water usage, their water bill, what can they do to save volume and things of that nature, but- what can they do to save volume and things of that nature, but then that's going to generate folks calling the department and asking questions, and so we've got to have these folks completely trained in this system where they can answer the questions and be helpful.
I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't feel 100% confident with some of your answers, but I understand what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. I just hope that we're very cautious and careful with, with the employees and what we do, and make sure that we do have a, a training program in place, not wait through, not, not wait for the implementation of this program to go forward. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the, move the item.
I do believe Commissioner Gilbert has a question, followed by Commissioner Regalado.
Second, just, just really a comment. Roy, on, on this item, as you all train these folks, let's, let's use attrition like as an active factor, so if you have meter readers that are going to resign, don't fill those positions as you go through. So there, there are smarter ways to do that. I have confidence that you all are going to take care of everybody, but remember, the point of using, you know, getting the new meters and, and it's supposed to make it more efficient and cost less. I'm not trying to spend the same amount of money in an enterprise fund just to maintain a certain level, so let's definitely train the folks that we can. Let's not fill positions as people leave and retire. Let attrition take its natural course, but we don't want to artificially put our finger on the thumb to remove all the efficiencies that we're expecting, because those efficiencies translate to people's bills. So we just want to be mindful of that when we're looking at it, I think, but we can, we can do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Regalado.
Yeah, I was just going to add, you know, I have a, a private version of this, so this is a technology, and you could buy it and, and put it in your house, and I have the, a private version of it that uses artificial intelligence to tell you how much water you're using, and it shuts off your water if you go beyond a certain marker. So to Roy's point, you're going to get so much data on your water use that you are going to have questions, so I think that's important. And, and the folks that do this work, they know that the technology is coming, we've been talking about it, they're aware that there is going to be a dramatic change with these meters, and there is going to be a saving to the department, but there's going to be a huge saving to the user, because we have a lot of meters that break or that read wrong, and people have to pay that, and then we get into, you know, everything from, there's a broken line and we don't know about it until three months later, to the meter's not working and it overcharged you, and now, I just had a resident that had that issue, and, and now we have to deal with that situation. So I think there is going to be efficiencies nonetheless, and, and I, I thank you for your concern, Commissioner Garcia, but prom, I promise you that we're working on it and that the folks that do this work know that the technology is changing daily, and that that's going to be changing the dynamic of what they do.
Commissioner Regalado would like to move the item.
Yeah, he moved it or I'll second it.
Second? Moved by, who, who moved it?
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Short item passes.
Thank you.
I believe the next one up is AP2, pulled by D3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a, a motion to be read onto the record. It's the amendment to the, to the item that satisfies what we've been negotiating with, with the state attorney's office. If I can have the county attorney's office read that onto the record, and then once she's read into that, then to the record, I'll move the item with those amendments.
Commissioner Hardiman moves to amend item 8P2 to revise the contracts with Advocate Program Inc. and Court Options Inc. to add the state attorney's office as a signatory to the contracts and as an additional insured. Require the providers to collect a fee that will be distributed to an endowment fund to be created by the state attorney's office and the Miami Foundation to fund scholarships for offenders who successfully complete one of the state attorney's office diversion programs and seek to obtain training or education, and designate the state attorney's office as the party responsible for administering and controlling the misdemeanor services program. Copies of the amended agreements have been provided to the clerk.
Second that. Second.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
So sorry.
Hold on. Commissioner Hardiman, are you done? Okay.
I've got a que, I've got a question.
Gonzalez, and then Bermudez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't want to take too much of time, but I, I just wanted to thank you for working on this, and I want to thank State Attorney Kathy Fernandez Rondo. I think this is going to be incredible for the community. I think it was a great initiative. I remember when we first talked about it in committee, so I just want to thank you for doing this, man.
Commissioner Bermudez.
I support the item, but my question's going to be, I don't think it's proper to Commissioner Hardiman, maybe to the administration. What's the, is there any cost related by the, by this amendment to the county at all?
No.
Yeah, fiscal, the fiscal impact. Want to know if there's any cost, because, I mean, I, I like, very verbose, Commissioner Hardiman, very nice, but I, I want to know if there's any cost to this.
Namada, you're recognized if you're the adequate person.
Thank you, Chair. Namada Upalchi Pekomen Officer, there is no cost to the county, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm fine. I support it.
That, all in favor, signed by by say nay? All opposed, nay? Show the item passed.
As amended.
And, Mr. Attorney, are we on 15B1, or are we done?
15B1 was already handled, so you're on motions.
Perfect. So Commissioner Bermudez, any motions or appointments? Hardiman? No. Commissioner Bastian? Orbis? Regalado? Cohen Higgins?
Vice Chairman?
Yeah, we're good.
Steinberg? And Gilbert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have some allocations and a couple of appointments. The first allocation is, I move to appoint Harold Charles to the Unsafe Structures Board.
Harold?
Charles to the Unsafe Structures Board.
All right. Commissioner Cohen Higgins seconds your motion. All in favor, signed by by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Thank you. Also, Mr. Chairman, I know that we're all aware of this, but Give Miami Day is coming up, and we also know that the CBOs have been, and they will continue, continue to struggle. I am doing from my office, what I do every year, I'm actually supporting several CBOs. I want to encourage all of you all to do the same. One of the CBOs that I'm supporting is FAM, and I'm going to allocate $10,000 from my account to them today. Mr. Chairman.
All right. There's a motion, there's a second by the vice chair. All in favor, signed by by say nay? All opposed, nay? And that's a good point that you bring up, Commissioner Gilbert. I'm going to do the same. I'm going to compile my list of all the ones that I want to support, and I'll read it onto the record in a, in a week or so. But yes, I, I, I agree with you, and I like that. Commissioner Cohen Higgins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too will be supporting FAM for Give Miami Day in the amount of $5,000, and so to the attorneys or to our allocations or however we do it, I'd like to do it in support of that organization, for Give Miami Day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cohen Higgins. Second it, or you're going to do the same?
I'll read it.
Okay, so Commissioner Gonzalez is going to do the same, and he is seconding the motion, and at that point, I'll, I'll, I'll add on to that as well. Five, five, I wanted to bring my full list next week, but I'll still do that later. All right, so we've got the three of, so Rodriguez, Cohen Higgins, Gonzalez, in for five, there's a motion by Commissioner Cohen Higgins, seconded by Gonzalez, all in favor, signed by by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Show that allocated, and then...
I stepped up a motion, and I have to read for Commissioner Hardiman. You going to read it for me, please? I move this.
Commissioner Gilbert moves that on behalf of Commissioner Hardiman, the board approve